Ken Killian.
Here.
Michael DeLecky.
Here.
Eileen Nichols is excused. John Miller.
Here.
Stephen Becker.
Here.
Patrice Steiner.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
On the agenda, we have the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you'd prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the February 14, 2012 council meeting. Item B is payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight, I'm appointing Chris Wright and Larry Burkey to the Pecan Committee dealing with the fast fiber. D is licenses, one and/or two-year operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic, fermented malt beverages, and intoxicating liquors. Are there any items on which you would prefer separate discussion and action?
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Second.
The motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Tonight, under Citizens' Comments, Observations, and Petitions, if any, Kathy Kopp has indicated she would like to speak.
Good evening. I know you've got a big agenda, but what I am here for tonight is at the request of the direction of the Platteville Tourism Commission. Per the state statute and our contract, we are required to submit an annual report before the end of February each year, so that is what this packet of information is. In the packet, you will see a letter written by Deb Jenny, who's the Chair of the Tourism Commission, acknowledging that this report has been reviewed and done in conjunction with the Tourism Commission and approved at their last meeting. There is a lot of information on the right side of that packet that includes the advertising pieces that we did, lots and lots of detail there. I realize this is a lot of information. On the left side of the packet specifically is the new financial format that was approved by the Tourism Commission that explains the number of different categories of functions that we, as a tourism entity, do with the room tax money. And attached to that, that's the very first piece on the left side, it does show the budget, and we were in receipt of $54,375 this year in room tax, which was almost $3,000 less than we had projected a year ago. Of note, there is a line, a column there, that shows the tourism entity, in conjunction with, in addition to the room tax money, spent $33,454 on tourism-related projects. So, the total tourism promotion for the community of Platteville through the Tourism Commission with the room tax, and the monies allocated by the chamber/tourism entity came to $87,824. And what we added was some of the council requested to know what the chamber's budget was, so the far-right column. Those numbers in red are only what the chamber spends on those same items. So, there's a number of, lots and lots of information here. The details of what the summary report are in the attachment that follows. So, all of those categories have all of the information in great detail as far as how we perform this year. Other information that we included in the packet is information from the Department of Tourism on economic impact of travelers, and the most current information we have is for 2010. The numbers for 2011 will be coming out sometime at the end of April. They also, we've included a copy of the Department of Tourism's success scorecard. It's a one-page bragging rights for the department, and I'm very proud of the fact that we are showcased in that as being one of the Travel Wisconsin Welcome Centers. There's also information in there. There's a pie chart that shows where all of the visitors came from this year, and we had over 11,000 visitors during the course of the year in the Welcome Center. The other piece that we did attach was something that the council members already received, and that is our executive summary, the Chamber and Room Tax Tourism Entity Budget for 2012 with the same type of breakdown financial report, and what we call the roadmap, the action plan for our plans for this year, which have already been kicked off. And again, that's for your information, and we did include, like I said, the economic impact for information from the Department of Tourism. And just a note, that the Department of Tourism has very rigorous control set for the criteria for collecting that data that is approved by the Department of Revenue. So, there's more information on their website, but basically, 2010, we saw nearly $72 million worth of tourism impact in the county, which is up from $49 million in 1999. So, if you have any questions, please, yes, Steve?
Thank you for this information, but to tell you the truth, I'm not even going to look at it tonight.
No, I'm only submitting it.
And anything to do with what's on the agenda tonight, I'm not going to look at that, because if there was anything really pertinent to what we're covering tonight, it sure should have been submitted long before now.
Steve, this report is what's required by the state statute.
I understand that. I'm just telling you, I don't know what's in it, and I'm sure there's a lot of good information in it, but it's nothing that I can take into consideration this evening.
Absolutely. The intent is only to turn in the report, and it was at the request of the Tourism Commission that we do it at the public meeting.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda tonight is reports. Under reports, we have committee reports. The Area Ambulance Committee Fire and EMS Facility Task Force, you have the reports in there from that.
I have a question.
Sure.
On that. On the February 14 minutes from the Area Ambulance Committee, they report on, the report makes reference to the council work agenda, or the council work session that was, that took place on February 15. And the way the report is written, it appears that the council discussed far more than it actually did, because it, under the bulleted council work session, it talks about motions being made and other kinds of things. And I would respectfully ask that those minutes be corrected to reflect, in fact, what was talked about at the council work session versus what was talked about at the Area Ambulance Meeting.
Okay, without specifics, I don't know how to correct that.
Well, under council work, and this is on the February 15, 2012 minutes, and I don't know what page that is of what you have. From what I have, it's on page 32, but I'm looking at the electronic version. And page two of the minutes, the first bulleted item on that page says city council work session. And then, there are several indented bullets that talk about Tuesday evening, the council met and did something, and then, the next one, the next bullet says, "Different locations were discussed," and some of the things on that list were not discussed at a council meeting. And then, as you go on down through those different locations were discussed.
Let me just make sure I have this. So, what we need to do is move that back.
Move that out.
That's what is at the EMS meeting, not the council meeting.
Right, not the council meeting.
Got it.
Right.
Okay. We also have the committee meetings from 12:07, 111, and 215 in there as well. Community Safe Routes Committee, minutes are in there. Martin and Stewart Commission, anything to add by the members of the commission?
Nothing.
Nothing.
I do want to note one thing. There have been some interesting articles out in the media lately about rising water rates, and much of the supposition about what's going to happen in the future in other places is tied to the fact that many, many, many other places are not maintaining their water infrastructure at all. They're basically hoping that some miracle happens. In the city of Platteville, we have not done that. We've maintained our water supply system. We put a new water tower in a few years ago. We're already looking at the current one as possibilities for renovation or upkeep for that. And as everyone knows who's driven around town, we're constantly replacing pipes underground, and so, a lot of the problems that other places have coming down the pike, we are not going to experience because we've been doing what we should be doing all along, which is maintaining our infrastructure. And so, when you see any of these things out in the media that suggest that there's billions and billions of dollars of infrastructure repair that's going to have to be done, we'll always have something to do here, but that's not Platteville they're talking about, so. Parks and Recreation Commission, John?
Anything to add?
Community Development Board? It's Barb, I think, isn't it? Museum Board? Mission on Aging?
Nothing yet.
In the packet, you have other reports. There's the UW Platteville Transportation and Parking Update. An interesting tidbit on the back of that is the listing of the parking permits that UW Platteville has issued, and they're down this year, something that I find very interesting that we're seeing going on, and as they continue to manage parking, I expect you'll continue to see those decline as well. The Building Inspection Department Report is in there, and the Department Progress Reports are in there. Is there anything on which you have commentary or questions?
Yes, I have another question, and that's on the library report. Within the library report, there is a memo directed to the Platteville Common Council. And can somebody tell me if this is going to be on our agenda for a future meeting? Or?
It is.
Next agenda, or we don't?
Soon. Would you like to be on the next one? We may get on the next one. That's all right. Larry, would you add that as something we'll put on the next agenda?
Certainly.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on those reports? Moving on to action items tonight. Item A is Contract 19-12, the Auditorium Painting Contract. This involves the painting of the walls of the auditorium. Friends of the Auditorium Group has been working hard. They've replaced some seating in there and done some other work as well. And as part of the Graham Fund money, there's a request to, or part of Graham Fund funding, a request to paint the auditorium, and this is the bids for that, which total?
$16,000.
$16,000.
We have members of the Friends Group here if you have questions. Otherwise, it's regular contract item.
Cheryl Schmider has registered in favor, and if you have any questions, she'd be here to answer them.
I have one question. Were the walls inspected to make sure that they were solid? A few years back, we had separation of the wall on, what side is it, east side? So, I assume that you inspected the walls?
But that wall was repaired, though, Ken.
Yes, I know, but I'm talking about the other walls, because they were examined closely enough so we're not painting over something which is loose.
There's a few patches of paint that are flaking, more around the exit door on the east side. The walls really are, I mean, to me, they are in good shape. No visible signs of deterioration, anyway.
I did not do a thorough inspection of these walls. However, if during the act of the painting, something does come up, we'll have to address it at that time.
Well, one time, I went around and tapped some of the walls with a hammer, so it's still solid and sound.
That's why there's problems. You could hit it with a hammer. Stop it!
Don't do that. You made the big mistake.
We'll have inspected the walls thoroughly. I didn't go all the way up.
Don't let Ken in there.
Bad plan.
So, what you're saying, Ken, is the paint will not hold up the walls, is what you're saying? I have a question, though, too, Howard. It says here you got the $16,000 for the painting, plus time and materials for minor plaster repairs. Could that be $1,000 or $10,000? You don't know, correct?
We don't know at this time. We'll be looking at that. Generally, that will prob, that would come from the building and grounds budget for City Hall. If it's an excessive amount, then I'd have to work with the city manager and the council to come up with other funding sources.
So, would it make more sense to do that first and then paint afterwards?
Well, that would be done in conjunction with the painting. If we find areas, that kind of leads into, goes back to what Ken was saying, was as we do the work, if we find that we need some minor repairs, then we'll make sure that we do those, and if there's extensive repairs needed, then we'll just have to stop. But I don't expect to be a lot of repairs.
So, what they would do, Howard, is go through, and as they go through the priming process, when they hit a bad spot, they'll stop and fix it and continue to prime, and then, when they get done, do the final top coat.
They'll talk to me first, and then they'll fix it, but yes.
Well, the whole east wall was done, what, a year ago or two years ago?
I don't recall how.
Anyway, recently.
Yeah.
So, that wall, we know, is in good shape, and don't take a hammer to it, Ken.
I'm going to request six more hammers.
Ken should have been on the table.
Cheryl has an answer for this. How many plays are scheduled this year? Why are we painting something? I mean, I'm for painting it, and I don't care. You can have the money. But how many plays do they have scheduled, or doesn't seem like they put on many plays to spend $16,000 to do painting?
State your name and address, please.
Cheryl Schmider. I live at 670 Lancaster Street in Platteville. I'm the President of the Friends of the Platteville Municipal Auditorium Group. Thank you for your question. Right now, we have a couple of items that are scheduled in the springtime. There is a Southwest Academy Ballet Arts Showcase. St. Mary's is using the space. I believe the homeschoolers have used the space for some rehearsals. There is an ongoing contract, I don't actually know if it's a contract, but a church uses it every Sunday. We haven't gone so far as to schedule for the fall. We have some things from the Platteville Community Theater that we're thinking about. We want to put on a variety show yet this spring, so that's three items yet this spring. Of course, we know, getting into summertime, it's just too hot to do anything in there, not only for the audiences, but even more so for people who are on the stage. So, then, we're getting into the fall timeframe. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Any other questions for Cheryl?
I did just want to point out a couple of things. The last time that the auditorium was painted was in the early '80s, and prior to that, it was in 1958. So, it's probably due for a fresh coat of paint. Thank you.
I have a question. We allocated 100, we authorized $125,000 from the Graham Fund for work on the auditorium this year. Is this the first expenditure, actually, then? The 16?
Yes.
It is. And the seats are wonderful.
I move to approve Contract 19-12 Auditorium Painting in the amount of $16,000, with Rock Church Construction being the contractor.
Second. The motion is second. Is there any further discussion?
One more question. Why isn't the ceiling being done? Who can answer that? Howard?
I was asked that we only look at the walls at this time.
Okay.
Because the walls are being changed color. It's going to be painted dark blue and then, like, a white, sort of an eggshell-blue-white.
Match the seats.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Killian?
Apparently, we do.
Killian?
You ready?
Roll call vote. Let's have a roll call vote here.
I thought you said roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B under Action is Resolution to Decrease Registration Fees for Specific Recreation Programs, Specifically Backyard Buddies. It was felt that the fee structure was too extreme and would essentially eliminate the participation, and a proposal came back to lower those.
Do you need a staff report?
Sure.
The city council approved a resolution last summer in an attempt to modify the park and rec fees, and as a part of that, we increased several different fees. We've since changed some of our staffing and have new recommendations, one of which is to reduce the fee for the Backyard Buddies program. What was previously raised last year to $80, we'd like to see that reduced to $45 for non-residents, and then decrease the registration fee from $40 to $25 for residents. This is a relatively small program for very young children, and I guess we're requesting that the city council consider reducing the costs.
Thank you. Questions for Larry?
I do have a question, and that was your use of the word. It appears that you will be bringing additional resolutions to reduce fees? Is that what you're, I mean, you said this is?
No, this is the only one.
This is the only one. We will be looking at fees for next year, so there will be additional changes coming forward, but the proper channels is to take it to the Recreation Committee. The only reason we're taking this directly to the council is because the previous ordinance changing this had been, excuse me, the previous resolution had been approved by the city council without going to the Recreation Committee last year.
But we don't expect to see additional, this isn't going to be on the agenda all the time?
Nope.
Any further discussion? Motion to approve?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C is a Resolution to Amend Section 6, Part N E and Part N G, Sub 3, Sub C of the Employee Handbook, specifically Work Assignments and Call-Ins. Larry, would you give us a brief synopsis?
Certainly. A resolution bringing forward changes to the 2011 handbook is what we're considering, in that we change the language governing the call-in provisions, as well as the ability to change employment schedules. Under our existing handbook, city staff has the ability to change the schedules of subordinates so that overtime is not incurred for the city of Platteville. For example, if we know a snowstorm is coming on Saturday, we will send employees home early on Thursday and then call them in on Saturday and not expect them to show up on Friday. What this does is it says that we are required to give 12 hours notice for a schedule change, which will help separate it from a call-in, which is a little bit different in that a call-in, you receive a minimum of two hours pay or time and a half, whichever is greater. So, what this will do is it'll give employees, number one, notice that their schedule is changing, at least 12 hours of notice to help with daycare or family obligations. It also helps by establishing what designates a call-in versus a schedule change. And we've always had both provisions, it's just, excuse me, since the handbook was approved, we've had both provisions, both options, but under this proposal, it'll help separate the two in what defines a call-in.
Thank you. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D under Action is a Conditional Use Permit for 1100 East Mineral Street, the Iverson Construction Asphalt Plant. This is the annual request for Conditional Use Permit, so they can put the asphalt plant in there and help pave area streets.
Motion to approve.
Second. I think Barb got there first, and John got the second. It was kind of like harmony. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item E tonight is to Consider Ordinance 12-05 Creating Section 31.15 Vending on City Property. This was asked to be reconsidered by Alderman Killian, and at the last meeting, the vote was affirmative to bring it back for reconsideration. I think the ball's in your court.
I would like to see this ordinance rescinded, and for the following reasons. First of all, one is the need. Is there really a need for it? Two is to look at what is the number of vendors that will be affected by this particular ordinance? Is it just a few, or one or two? Also, I think there's too much duplication of existing ordinances. We already have ordinance as far as obstructing streets. We have an ordinance as far as littering on property. Also, the street may be reconstructed, and that may help to solve some of the problem as far as vendors on the street. We have not looked at the temporary closing of the street on bar nights. Maybe this is an answer as far as making space, or people are not on the sidewalk. And also, I would say that this ordinance could be brought back if people want to bring it back, and I think it needs careful review, and on the basis of these items, I would move that this ordinance to be rescinded. And as I have just stated, that doesn't mean we don't pass one in the future. You can bring it back, so my motion is to rescind.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Discussion?
We're not at the point of being able to put in particular amendments to the present ordinance, so I'd rather rescind it than bring it back in its entirety, if you want to bring it back.
Well, I know this was on for discussion, I guess, last time, and in reading the minute, I don't know how much discussion you had on this, but I did take a look at this, and I'm thinking back of when this was actually put in in the first place. And as I recall, I mean, as far as a need goes, I think the reason it was put in in the first place is because the chief of police indicated that there was a need, that there was a need to, that we needed to have that. There were some problems that, under the existing rules or laws, or whatever you want to call them, it was difficult to have any type of enforcement, and he indicated there was a need. And after this, we recognized that need, he put together this particular ordinance, and we discussed it and passed it. Now, you're objecting that there's no need? I don't know. The police chief said there is. Number of vendors, how many does it affect? Well, I don't think we want to just look at how many vendors it affects right now. I think you want to look at how many vendors will it affect in the future? Maybe it affects one now, two now, three now. I don't even know how many are over there, but I think the real question is, is do we want to have some rules in place to control this in the future? And as far as the duplication, apparently, I don't know what you're referring to as a duplication. I think what I would like to hear, before we just flat-out reject this, is we'd hear from the chief and see if he sees there's some problems with the existing ordinance. If there is, table it, have him look at it, come back, bring something back. Don't just throw it all out and try to start all over, or don't sit there and wait and say, "Now, when we have a problem, maybe in the future, then we'll think about a new ordinance. Let's look at what we have, see if there's some changes that be needed, and then make them." I'd like to hear what the chief has to say about this particular ordinance.
I think this could be a good ordinance, but what I would like to see it benefit from is some input from you folks about the objectives that you'd like to achieve with it. I think that it might be a little far-reaching right now in some of the wording. I don't know, and this is where I'm seeking some guidance from you folks. I don't know if you want to have it apply in public parks or other public property. I think that it might be a little bit cumbersome for nonprofits right now to have to obtain a permit, and then, prior to that, seek waiver of the permit fee from you folks, I'd like to streamline that a little bit. So, there are some things, I think, could benefit from further input.
Can I continue here? Is it true that when you-
Is it true that when you put this together, as I recall, you said you looked at some of the similar ordinance that were in place in like Madison and some other cities and tried to pick and choose and to pull it together?
And I relied pretty heavily on Dodgeville's ordinance. And there's been some questions raised about the insurance requirement in there. And I did touch base and so did the city manager. And we did confirm that the insurance, as we've, as I outlined in the ordinance, that is attainable insurance coverage.
Ken, when I look at what it says here on the second page on prohibited and required acts, I mean, when it says a vendor shall not block, you know, access to a business, that seems reasonable. They shall not operate between, we've got a restriction on the hours. They shall not block the public way. Have used audio/video equipment such as speakers. Sell food in glass containers. I mean, all these seem to make a lot of sense. And then when it goes into what they shall do, boy, there's nothing here that really seems out of line as far as I can see. So I think we're just crazy to throw something this out. So if your motion doesn't pass, I will be prepared to make a motion to table and give some direction to the chief of police to come back at some time in the future with some recommended changes.
If this motion doesn't pass, it simply stays the way it is?
Well, that's right. But then we can make another follow-up motion.
But it doesn't have to be tabled.
Okay, whatever. That's fine. I don't care. However you want to get there.
Other discussion?
I concur with Steve. I think that the things that are asked of the vendor shall and the vendor shall not are all things that are not unreasonable. I think one of the things we've heard is about the trash and the amount of trash and who's responsible for the trash. And often, the property owners are the ones that are kind of left with, left, if you want to call it, holding the bag. And perhaps they are trash bag, right? And perhaps it's, I mean, that should be a shared responsibility. And I don't think that we have anything in place that makes that a shared responsibility. Do we, Doug?
Not right now. I mean, there aren't a lot of trash receptacles downtown.
There's a procedure. If you wish to speak, I'd appreciate if you would follow it. Other discussion?
I voted for this, voted against this the first time because I didn't see it as being consistently applied. It seemed to me that the farmer's market is a similar kind of entity and a similar kind of process. And it seemed odd to me that we would have one set of rules for Second Street and a different set for the farmer's market. I'm not really sure, to tell you the truth, what problem we were solving by passing this.
Other discussion?
On page two, as I recall, that particular item is already covered by the state. So why are we bothering to restate it in here? Which is organizations can have three events per year. So we're just, some of this is just redundant. As I pointed out, for the obstructing streets and sidewalks.
Zan Shields has indicated she'd like to speak. Could you please come forward, state your name and address? I'm going to bring that down just a little bit.
Sixty-five Mitchell Avenue, Platteville, Wisconsin, Zan Shields. Okay, basically, I came in on the last end and I was hearing something about the people that's downtown with the trash. And we clean up after ourselves. That's just something that's put out there that they want to say. We clean so well after ourselves. We even clean up after drug dealers. We pick up drugs off the streets and turn them into the police officers. But the people that I'm sure that were making a complaint, they probably wouldn't have turned the drugs in. And that would have been, the Banfield sisters, they probably would have used them. And let me say something else. We have caused no one any type of harm at any time. And this has been, I've been talked about for years and years and years. And it's beginning, what's beginning to be redundant is this. And maybe this ordinance should have been named in my name. The Zan Shields Ordinance, you know, for downtown vendors. I mean, it's ridiculous because I don't understand. I really and truly don't.
How many vendors are there typically, Zan, on a weekend?
Sometimes there are like maybe three or four. And we don't actually know who they are. But when they speak of things like picking up the trash, we so pick up our trash. We certainly pick up our trash.
And when you say three or four, that include, you're talking about vendors that have separate carts, if you will?
Yeah, sometimes they come in trucks.
Businesses who open their back door.
No, not businesses. Sometimes they come in their trucks. And when they come in their trucks, they take barbecue pads off and they start to work. We don't know who they are. We really don't care who they are. Now, maybe some of the downtown businesses care who they are. I've noticed something that goes on it with Los Amigos. He comes over when the Chicago best decides they're going to sell pizza outside. He has a problem. He has a problem with everyone. And he's, you know, he'll come up and stand up. And you're going to even ask me, what country am I from? You know? My God, I don't know if he's a citizen or what. But he's just gotten too far with the American dream because the American dream is not an American nightmare. And he doesn't want anybody to sell anything because he thinks everyone should come to his place. Well, if they want Mexican food, they will go and get Mexican food. And this is not about us making a nuisance of ourselves. It's not about any of that. This is not about insurance. It's not any of that. You know? It's not about insurance. Oh, they want to pass a spurgeon on our business. Well, guess what? President of the council, Mike Delechi, has been eating with us for fifteen years. He's never been poisoned before, not even so much of a case of diarrhea, as we've known. He just ain't from us on the twenty side.
I'm not going there. I'm not going there.
I'm going there and I went there. I so went there. But I'm not understanding. I'm looking at a little cat and mouse game that's being played here. And I'm quite upset about it now. And I'm over it. Because it makes no sense. And everybody in here knows what it's about. You know what it's about. It's about appeasing those that are down there. And that's what happens in Platteville, is appeasement. It's definitely appeasement. We are not doing anything to anybody. And when it got, came to its worst place was when we had to deal with the Banfield sisters at the Chaw Bar. And that's when it came to its lowest.
We probably want to be careful here at this point.
What are you trying to say to me? I can't say what I'm speaking of? That, you know, free speech is not allowed here? Should I censor myself?
Are you sure that you want to go there is what I'm asking.
Yes, I want to go there. And I'm going to go further than there. Because we do plan on suing them for abuse and harassment for months at a time. So don't, please, don't censor me. Don't.
Okay, all I'm asking is if you're going to accuse people, be very careful with what you say.
Yes, yes, yes. I don't have to be careful. I know what would happen to me. I know the numerous of times that we've had to call the police. And I don't think that there's one police officer that's going to say, oh, no, they never called the police. Yes, we have. Now, this is about appeasement. I don't know what's going on in here. Personally, I really don't care, but I want justice. And that's all it is. That's all we want. When we come out on the streets, because we have the right to be there just like anyone else. We have the right to be there just like Big Jim is up at the bank selling his barbecue. Some really nice barbecue, by the way. But he's selling it. And for years now, we've had to deal with this trash that's going on and on and on. And I don't see why you, as a council, have not had the time to get rid of this in one way or another, without trying to get rid of us or sanction us. Why are you not sanctioning them? Why do you all not speak to them? I don't get it. You know, we've been like, they've tried to redistrict us from certain areas. You can't be here or you can't be there. Wow, well, you can't be nowhere. But we are going to be someplace and we are going to be in Platteville. And we're not going anywhere because we're not breaking any laws. We're not breaking any rules.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as I say, still, you never had diarrhea.
Got a camera in my house somewhere that I don't know about? Maybe more than one?
I don't want to go there either.
I don't want to either.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. My support of this ordinance wasn't about anything other than my concern for health, safety, and cleanliness. It wasn't about any one person. It wasn't about any one stand. I will freely admit that I don't go down to Second Street in the night. I only hear reports. While it's, while I don't necessarily care who's there, and I don't, what I don't want to see happen is for someone to get sick, for someone to have issues that have been raised tonight. And for us as a council to say, well, we don't know who goes there. We don't know what goes on. I mean, I somehow think that's not accepting responsibility for us to just, you know, kind of say, well, whatever happens, happens. And if people get sick and we don't know who the vendors are and, you know, that's just the way it is. So I think that my support of this wasn't so much to put, to discourage someone's business, but perhaps to reward those people who are there and who know each other and who work hard to keep the street orderly and taken care of. And to make sure that folks who join in that have joint responsibility for that. So this, to me, this ordinance wasn't about trying to get rid of or any specific or any person or any, but more to address the issues of cleanliness, sanitation, food and health, safety, and to make sure that everyone was subscribing to those kind of rules, if you want to call it that. I mean, I think there's people in our audience, I mean, that, I mean, these are just things. So, you know, one of the things that scares me is someone pulls up and starts selling stuff and it's not sanitary. And it's not, you know, what is the recourse of that person if they get violently ill? And where is the city's responsibility in that if that happens? And I'm not talking about your, because you've already said for fifteen years you've been, so I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about other folks who just come.
Any other discussion?
I got a question for Barb. Did you vote no on this ordinance last time?
I was in the, uh, who was I? I was in the majority.
Okay.
Because Ken and I voted to bring it back.
Then you voted yes.
I supported it. You supported it?
Okay. Anything else? The motion on the fourth floor to rescind the ordinance, roll call vote, please.
Killian?
Yes.
Delechi?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Becker?
No.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
No.
Ty?
It means it fails.
So fails. Motion fails.
I'd like to ask the, I would recommend that we ask the chief to maybe take another look at this and if he sees some needed changes, to bring them back in the future.
Would you do that, chief?
In the interim, it is your pleasure. I mean, we have not been enforcing it till now because it seemed like it was getting kind of debated.
I guess I'd ask if we have any specific comments that we'd like the chief to look at or to include in the ordinance that are not there currently.
I don't. I'm happy with the way it is. I'm just-
Well, Councilor Killian said that this is duplicative, that much of this is in other ordinances. So one of the things I would like to know is if that's the truth. So if somebody can tell me that this is duplicate information and it's already in ordinance, then, you know, that's a different story to me. So to me, that's the question. If this is duplicative, then, you know, but I don't know that based on the information I have tonight. The other thing I would like to, I have also done a bit of investigation about the insurance. And I've gotten what I would call run around the tree on that. So I contacted Dodgeville, the city clerk, who then referred me to someone else, who's referred me to someone else, who's referred me to someone else. But no one's actually told me how this insurance is available or where it's available or anything like that. So I, this is not, so I have real issues about how you would obtain this liability insurance, what that is, some kind of-
And the only experience I've had with it, Larry made a phone call and directed, or informed me of the results of that. And I in turn went to the same insurance agent in town, asked about this particular insurance. And he said, that's the bare minimum policy I could write. So that I checked with one and he indicated that it is very possible.
Well, I'd like to see that kind of written down so I can, because I've gotten run around and run around about that when I've talked to the Dodgeville people.
I'm sure it's available at one level because Dairy Day's vendors, for instance, that do this at fare after fare have to have some kind of insurance. And I don't remember the specific details. I'm not involved with the food part of that. But I know there's some insurance process they have to go through.
Also, Doug, I assume your officers, I would think they would have an opinion on an ordinance. They're the ones that are being called to Second Street and address the problems. Zan mentioned people driving up in a truck, pulling out a barbecue. You know, only the officers would know that information. And perhaps they could have some input on the ordinance also. They're the ones that deal with it.
And that's something that I would like to clarify is currently this only applies on city property to include parks. I mean, is that something that you would like to see continued? Would you like to see it extended? I don't know what your preference is. Because right now, if somebody, and I throw this out by way of example, if the Boy Scouts have a car wash and a hot dog sale out at Walmart, that's not, doesn't fall under this ordinance because that's on private property.
Correct.
Same thing as the VFW or behind brothers. Somebody could pull up a truck and haul out a barbecue and do it in the parking lot. Yeah.
I don't think the intent was to try to regulate that.
Okay.
But I, did I hear you say that currently you have not been enforcing this?
We have not because it seems like it's being debated yet.
No, it's done, it's done being debated.
Okay. But again, the other thing that I would like, or the other aspect I would like some clarification on, you want to see it applied in city parks. Because that will extend the reach to Platteville youth baseball, things of that nature. And that's, I don't know if that was the intent or not.
I don't know. Might make it more complicated.
Well, this is one of the reasons why I had problems with the ordinance, which is if we're worried about food safety, then you've got to be worried about it everywhere.
Yeah.
And if you're going to pick and choose those for whom food safety is a concern, that strikes me as a little bit odd, let's just put it that way.
But again, it's only on public property currently so that you could be five feet away and on private property. And we wouldn't have the ability to-
Understood.
-regulate that.
I know property.
Anything else about-
There is exceptions in here for, you know, certain entities and for things, some of the things that you mentioned. There are exceptions in here.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, next on the agenda tonight is item F, committee consolidation. Item one is ordinance 12-09, repealing section 3.37, the Tourism Commission, and creating section 3.43, the Tourism Committee. Uh, this is at the request of Alderman Becker to bring this ordinance forward. Would you like to start talking about it, or?
Oh, this is, uh, is that right? Okay. No, uh, do we have anybody that, uh, yeah, I guess I could start off, uh, some of the discussion here. And, um, I guess, boy, I'll tell you, there has been so much going on about this, and I think maybe, um, a good discussion, a little clarification might help all of us. First off, I guess, we've got two, two ordinance here, uh, 12-09 and 10, and one is repealing, uh, Tourism Commission and creating the Committee. And, um, so on, on that one, can the city manager sort of explain what he sees the effect of this? I mean, really, it's a, a difference between, uh, a commission versus a committee. We're repealing a commission and creating a committee. Now, I don't know about the makeup of it, because that's not, that can be changed around, but I think the, the most important thing is, is that's what we're centered on, commission versus committee. Would you care to clarify that?
I believe the membership of it are very similar between the two. The difference is, the commission that exists now is created with powers and authorities under state statutes. Members of commissions are, are often considered municipal officers. They have a responsibility, or, or they're an independent body that's required or authorized by an ordinance or statute to perform, to perform a particular function in local governments, or to administer an individual department. Um, they have authority, and, and in this particular example, it's set out by state statutes. Committees, on the other side, are, are subunits of a municipal body, or in this case, would be a subunit of the city council. Um, and statutes contain no provisions relating to the appointment of committees. Um, so really, the city council can make a committee for any purpose. Um, all committees make recommendations to another body, or in this case, would make a recommendation to the city council. Um, so, so really, um, committees are creatures of the governing body, and then subsequently, only have as much authority as what the city council or the governing body delegates to them. Typically, they, they just refer actions to the city, city council. So, you're, you're, you're changing the entity, the commission, from being one that has responsibilities and administers something under state statutes to an entity that reports to the city council with recommendations.
Uh, Larry?
And then the city council would still be required to administer under state statutes.
Yeah.
These particular dollars.
Under the state statutes, the city council would then have the, the contracting authority. They would have to contract with a tourism entity.
Okay. Let me go a step further.
I, I have a question just one about...
Yes, go ahead, Barb.
Could you please recount what the authority of a tourism commission is then? You said that it had authority under state statutes, so what specifically
Okay.
authority does it have?
Um, I did not bring my statutes with me. If you give me a second, I could look it up on the statutes in the back, but, um, tourism promotion and development is defined under state statute 6606.
Yeah, that's...
And, um, uh, they, right now, have the authority to contract with a tourism entity to do tourism promotion and development. Uh, without having the code book, I can't tell you exactly what the wording is, but in general, that's their, their program, their administration, that's their responsibility.
So, the tourism commission, at the present time, contracts with a tourism entity. So, this change from a commission that you're proposing to a committee, then puts the council in charge of contracting with a tourism entity?
Yes, that's the, when you remove the commission, the council takes the replace.
That's the way I understand it, exactly that way. Now, let me go a step further. I have a letter here, dated February 21st, uh, an email, 24th, written by Kathy Kopp, the executive director, and I don't know why I receive, I, I assume I received this because, uh, I am a member of the, a representative to the chamber, uh, from the country club. I guess that's why I got that. Uh, but anyway, uh, in this letter, she states that, um, she's talking about this proposed new, uh, proposed amendment to the state law. And then she says, "If passed, it would make it unlawful for any municipality to directly spend 70% of the room tax dollars." And then, and then it goes on, it says, "If the city council passes, passes this new ordinance, the one we're gonna consider here, it says that the city would have to reverse this decision. The proposed law would be effective January 1." So, I, I guess, uh, to me, it doesn't seem like this is true. That, um, if we pass this tonight, we make a committee, and the committee, as opposed to the commission, and the committee, as you just said, would still, uh, contract with a tourist entity, a tour, tourism...
Council would.
The council is what I'm saying.
Not the committee.
The committee would make a recommendation to the council who would endorse or...
Exactly, to the council, and the council then would contract with a tourism entity, which in the past has been the chamber, and I certainly know, and I'm certainly in favor of the chamber doing it, but I don't see any, I don't see how any change in the state law will have any impact, and I guess I'm trying to get this from the city manager, how this would have any impact and require the council to reverse anything. I don't believe this is true, Kathy, what you stated in this letter. I guess I'd like to know what makes you think this is true?
And, and if I could, I, I'd like to try to answer that. You, you did suggest the city manager as well. Uh, there's state senate bill 438 that's being proposed with the state of Wisconsin. Um, it's, uh, proposed by Representative Tranel and Senator Schultz. I do have two extra copies here with me, if you guys want to see those. Um, basically, what it does is it changes the wording of the state statutes, and it says that a municipality may continue to collect the room tax, um, but with regard to any room tax revenue collected, it has to go to a tourism commission or a tourism entity. And the city council would no longer have the authority to, um, uh, let's see. "A tax imposed under this paragraph, the municipality shall be paid to the municipality, and with regard to any tax revenue, may not be retained by the municipality, shall be forwarded to a tourism entity or commission." So, instead of saying "may," it's changing it to a "shall," which says we have to give the money to the tourism entity.
A tourism entity.
A tourism entity.
Tourism entity. Could be, could there be multiple tourism entities?
Uh, I'm not sure. Under this, I, I suspect, uh, you know, maybe that's an issue that needs to be further clarified. I, I, I'm not versed in, in legalese enough to interpret this for you. Uh, maybe that's an option, um, but, but really, you, even if you gave it to a tourism entity, you would still maintain authority over...
How to spend the money.
How to spend the money, it's just that you have to give the money to them. So, you, you lose the, the ability to retract the money, or to keep the money.
And there's nothing we're proposing here tonight that says we're not gonna give this to a tourism entity, as we have been in the, as we have been for many, many years. Right?
Right.
Good. Let me continue, if you don't mind. As I see this, this came up here, uh, this has been kicking around for about five or six months at least, maybe even longer than that, but the last time it really came up was about five months ago, when we, um, had a city council meeting, and we were sort of, we had been asking for some financial information from the chamber and the tourist entity, and how they're spending this money. And, um, I felt we had been getting a lot of runaround, not a lot of action at the time. So, we finally did get a financial statement that was handed out the night of the city council meeting, not in advance, which is always a poor way to hand out financial information. But it was handed out, and it showed, um, the numbers through August 31, and it showed the actual compared to budgeted, and it really didn't tell us whether this, the actual represented just tourism money, uh, from this part of this 57, or was it part of, uh, you know, the question came up, well, how much of the total money being spent comes out of the chamber's money versus the tourism money? We didn't have that information when this was handed out. So, it wasn't really good information. However, last month, we did get a little information. We got this from them. And what this is, which is a good start, I like this, because it allowed us to look at some information here that we haven't had before. And what this, uh, little document that we all received a month ago, uh, showed us, it shows, um, room tax money, the tourism entity money, and the total dollars spent on the tourism, and basically, how much of that is out of the chamber's money. So, it showed you the two pots, okay? The $57,000 tax money, and how much was out of the chambers. So, it, it gave you, and really, all, what we have here, we have this, this is based upon a budget. It's not actual, it's just based upon your budget for 2012. And if you run through the numbers here, apparently, you must have just sort of allocated some numbers, because it works out to 66% of the, uh, room tax, uh, 66% of it is allocated room tax, 33% of the tourism entity, you can see it pretty easy, this allocation. But as I went through here, and I looked at the detail, I added up, I see that there was $14,906 that were actually called for in this document, that would be spent for, uh, in the first, uh, seven items that were spent for direct expenses. This would be advertising, um, supplies, uh, direct advertising primarily. And really, uh, the rest of it sorting is salaries and overhead expenses for your building down there, which is fine. Uh, uh, as I figured out, if I look at the total in the visitor center, if I look at the, the total $29,000 that you're spending on the tourism, the building down there, this is item eight in your report here, um, of that total, $13,000 is salary, $15,000 is others, and, um, about, um, you know, 16 of it comes from the, the tax. Well, the thing is, is that I'm not quibbling with this. What, what I've had a problem with all the way along is that you haven't been providing the information to the city council, and this is really about accountability of elective officials. And that's really what it all comes down to, and that's the only reason for the change. We're not looking at trying to say that the chamber shouldn't be the designated tourism entity. I don't think any one of us up here are trying to say that, because who else are we gonna have besides the chamber do it? But what we're saying, and what I'm saying anyway, is that the oversight, the accountability, should rest with elected officials, whether it's this council now, or some council in the future. And that's really all this is about. Whereas what we're getting the fast, uh, pitch from the chamber is, is, oh my God, everybody get here, because they're trying to take our mon, this money away from us, which is far from the truth. What it's really about is accountability and providing financial information. You handed out some information tonight here, and I'm sure it's good information tonight. If this was something that you really wanted us to look at tonight, to take into decisions about what we're gonna, we're talking about, this sure should have been here a long time before tonight, so that we could sit down, analyze it, and look at it. Handing in information, an action item at the start of a meeting is ridiculous. That's what I got to say. It's about accountability.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment, and, uh, the comment I'm making, Steve, is the, the tourism, and the report that you got tonight is a report that was, uh, uh, pat, that was reviewed, that's due every year in February. So, this report, the fact that it came tonight is not...
I know, but it doesn't have to be the last night.
Well, the tourism commission doesn't, I mean, we just met last Thursday. Our meetings are the third Thursdays.
You can change meetings.
Well, that's when we've been, that's our regularly scheduled time, and that's when we met. So, I'm, you know, the fact that this comes tonight is because we just adopted this at the last meeting.
It's, it's in the ordinance, it's coming in February.
And that's right. And this is the second meeting in February.
It just happened.
And it just happened. So, I don't, I don't think that that's a fair, what I'm seeing as a criticism.
Well, I have had a lot of emails from people, um, and, you know, they're, they're assuming that we want to take this money away. We don't want to take the money away. They're assuming, uh, that we want to use this room tax money to balance the, uh, the city budget. That has never, never been discussed. Why would we want to do that? We want the room tax money to be used for tourism. Like Steve said, we just, uh, we're adding another step by changing the commission to a committee, and they will make the recommendation to the council, and like Steve says, have elected officials, look at the numbers, and then we'll okay the quarterly, I guess room tax comes quarterly, we'll, we'll okay the expense. But we, I, I don't understand why people, and a lot of emails. I mean, truly, they think that we're completely yanking this money away from them, and then that's just not the case, not at all. The city's budgets are...
Makes me wonder who's promoting that idea, and who's passing that off as truth, because, boy, they, they never got it from us. Where's it coming from? If I were the chamber board, I'd be asking that question. Where is that information coming from, that that's what's going on, and who's passing it around to all these members? I'd like to know that.
Yeah.
Because I've got some serious issues with communication going on there.
Anyway, like Steve says, it's accountability, and I, I look at it as a pretty simple issue. We're just adding one, um, one step to the process of turning over the room tax money.
Patrice, I'm kind of confused. Are you, are you suggesting that the council would look at quarterly this and then turn over room tax money on a quarterly basis?
Well, isn't that how it's done?
No. It's an annual, it's a contract that goes on, it's, and, uh...
Well, Duane does a, a quarterly report on the room tax.
He just provides that information for information purposes. We just, we don't actually do any...
Ongoing accounting.
I think what hap, what happens is the chan, the, there is a budget prepared in October, and that budget, just like Steve said, came and, uh, was adopted, and this is the budget that the room tax is spent again, just like, uh, $125,000 of the grand funding.
So, it's, sure, it's the 2011 room tax money. But we're adding another step to the process, that's all. We're not
I agree with Patrice.
wanting to take, we're not wanting to take the money away.
I have a problem with it, because I have two things that is going on, or three things. If this is a local room tax, and in our ordinance, and with the tourism agreement, it states that the money shall, or the commission should use the money only to promote and develop tourism in the city of Platteville, and then the tourism entity signed an agreement that said, "No reimbursement shall be claimed or made for any cost or expense not associated with the promotion or the development of tourism within the city of Platteville." So, my biggest problem on accountability is, we have a visitor center that I'm not sure if the chamber wanted to do, or if the tourism entity approved, but they're spending 29% of the local room tax dollars to support the Travel Wisconsin Welcome Center, that is one of seven in the state of Wisconsin, that has nothing to do with our local room tax. People should have a chance to use this allocation of $16,240 to be able to come to the tourism entity and say, "What kind of money is available? If I have a vent, event that I want to promote in Platteville, what kind of money are you gonna help me with, with either the, the sponsorship, the advertising, or the promotion of this?" And I can honestly say, Barb, with this budget that they submitted, there's no extra money there. Where is there extra money to say, I want to put on, the best example would say, the traveling... traveling Vietnam Wall came. If I came to the tourism entity and said, I needed $10,000 to promote this event, are you gonna tell me that the entity now has $10,000 sitting in a pot, available for me? Because the way you submitted what you're gonna spend the money for, it's all used.
John, I would remind you that in, until probably a year and a half or two years ago, 70% of the money was allocated to the tourism entity. The other 28% was retained by the Tourism Commission. And I'm sure Ken recalls that there was a program at that time where people could make grant application, if you wanted to call it that, to the Tourism Commission, and then the Tourism Commission allocated funds for special events. And about three years ago, that money was, for lack of a better word, swept into the city budget, or swept into other activities. And so now the Tourism Commission has no extra money, because we allocate the 70% to the tourism entity and approve their budget.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm glad we're taking control of the tourism entity to approve their budget of that 70%. So if the council in the future would like to tell them, I think you should only have 50% for operating expenses, and 50%, 50% available for events, that any organization in the city of Platteville could say, there's money to draw on, it's sitting there. We never said they could spend 70% of all their money, I don't think it was set up that way, to spend on Welcome Wisconsin Center, or to promote Grant County Tourism. That wasn't the original intent of the ordinance passed in 1994. It was to say, we want a local room tax to spend money locally to develop tourism in the city of Platteville. And they're not doing that according to their budget they're handing in. So I want accountability back in supporting this new ordinance to say, seven independent, unbiased people can tell them, yes, spend it that way, or not spend that that way. That's the whole purpose of the change.
I think Barb's right to a certain extent. Maybe if we want to have that little slush fund in there for those special projects, maybe when we do our city budget next time, we should have a line item to do that. You know, maybe that's, that is something we really should look at as city council members. I can't quite agree, I can't agree with what John's, quite what he's saying here, because I know as well as anybody that deals with financial information, you can make the case that every dollar spent, can, and particularly related to this particular entity, every dollar spent down at the chambers building, you can make the case that that dollar is spent for tourism, whether it's salary, whether it's overhead, I mean, these are allocated costs, you know, and, you know. So I don't have a problem with where, how that's being spent. Where I do have a problem is, is that I don't feel that we've been giving the information in before the next contract is awarded. I think that's, again, I'm just going back, city council, elected officials should be the ones that award these contracts, and, and demand accountability, demand good reporting practices, that's all we want. We haven't been getting it.
Agree. Other comments?
Are there other, are there people who...
Well, there are, but, you know, we kind of get to talk first, that's in our contract somewhere, I think. Tom Sigworth has asked to speak, followed by Ron Hall, followed by Ann Rupp. If you all would move over to the side there, so that you may follow them with alacrity, we would appreciate it. Please, when you step to the microphone, state your name and address, and...
My name is Tom Sigworth, I live at 910 Hillcrest Circle, in this great city of Platteville. Now, first of all, I just want to thank you all for your service to the city, as a member of the city council. You know, and as a businessman, I can empathize with you, how difficult it is to balance a budget, and the tough choices that come with it. That being said, first of all, I'd just like to encourage you to table the action till the repeal of that Wisconsin room tax reform, or till the Wisconsin room tax reform proposal is dealt with. I think a lot of things will be cleared up that time and how it goes, and if you still consider or feel the way you do today, it's been voiced tonight, then that can be revisited. But second of all, like just said, as far as accountability, we, every year, that report has been sent in, and it's been there for years to looking at, and we have tried, to the best of our ability, to meet the needs, you know, it's come, we have changed our reporting process three times that I'm aware of, and I've only been on the chamber here about, or involved with it for about six years. We have changed our procedure how to do it, based upon feedback we had received from the city council. So, in regards to accountability issue, I don't believe that's quite accurate. I believe that we have made efforts to do it numerous times. I agree, a communication gap is there. I don't believe it's among the chamber members, but I believe there is a gap between the city council and the chamber, that I would encourage that we make an effort to, to bridge. We're willing to do such, and to continue on in these discussions, but, that's, you know, what I'm saying. Thank you for your time.
Ron Hall?
I'm Ron Hall, I live at 570 Pioneer Road, in Platteville, and have a super eight in town here. I just, I'd like to see the commission stay in place, I think it keeps politics out of the picture. It, it is, the members for the Tourism Commission are appointed by the council president, so the council does have that advantage to, to appoint individuals to the commission. So I think that kind of opens the door for, as far as the council to, to have who they wish to have on it, because they, they appoint them. The, the Tourism Commission, I think it's just a good fit, it's worked. My philosophy, if it's not broke, why fix it? I don't have any problems. Terry's here from the country, and she doesn't have any problems. You say you're getting a lot of emails with all this, I think you need to listen to the people that put you here, that, for, that voted you in. You know, if people are speaking, that should say something. I just would like to personally see the politics stay out of it. It's, there's four properties in town here that collect this, this is not a city tax, it's paid by my customers, her customers, and the other properties' customers. It affects our bottom line, say you were to increase the, the rate on the tax, we have contracts with individuals, different companies and whatnot, and they can only pay so much. So guess what, if we raise the tax, for example, guess who eats that difference in tax? The owners of the motels, because they would match that dollar for them. So the motel would actually get less because of the extra tax. That's another thing that the commission helps control, is to try and look at the tax, too. It's, it's, and again, you say that you're for controlling of that, well, you are with council president appointing Tourism Commission members. I'm sure you got enough to do, it's just a small, little pile of money there, too, and I, I don't, have you had any comments of it not being spent well, or like to see it go different, or? As to what?
Some people question what, they think that some events aren't, you know, aren't tourism events. It's mixed up with chamber.
That's all, I've served on, served on the commission, I've been on the chamber board. Really, with a chamber, it's really hard to separate tourism versus not, because tourism is so widely spread, it, it can come into all different plays, it's simple little things somebody could spend a night. What did the city do with their percentage last year? What, what did the city do with their money that the motels collected for the city? The city's portion? What did you spend it on?
I think the historic and camp, like a five thousand.
It went to the general fund.
It went to the general fund?
It went to the general fund, which, Steve, you were saying that you're not gonna do.
Well, I think that's the next year's budget, but I think Barb brought up a, a good point, that maybe in the general, when we do our budget, we should have a little line item for those, and she's right, we used to have that, and...
We did, several years ago.
Well, the grant money would still be there, with, the city's still gonna have their portion, they could do that with that.
Yeah. Ron, I want to know one thing that you asked. We have this document that was given to us tonight, and was given to us actually earlier. And in this document, I note that, it says website, social media, the room tax is $4,480. And then there's calendar of events, that's $2,800. And then amongst all of it, with what the tourism entity is also putting in, it all adds up to over $9,000 on website, social media, and calendar. I did the very first city of Platteville webpages, way back when, in the early 90s. And I set those up, where we had places to eat, things to do, places to stay, the whole bit. And it took me about an hour a month to maintain the calendar of events, and any updates to the changes in businesses, and so on. I have a domain name, it costs me $85 a year, and I have big bandwidth for that as well. And so I'm looking at, even if you want to argue an hour a month is not enough, and you say an hour a week is, is what's needed to maintain a calendar of events, and some changes to businesses locally, and maybe a few things happening, where's the $9,000 going? That's an incredibly large amount of money to do what isn't that large a task. And so those are the kinds of questions I have, and other people have, when they look to see what happened to that money. And I have to know one thing to you, back in the 90s, when this room tax was first passed, the hotel and motel owners weren't pleased, as you might imagine, and I certainly understand the idea of what you mentioned about, you know, raising the tax and you getting stuck with it, and I would not vote for something that would do that to you, because I think that's unreasonable. But at that time, the one thing that the hotel and motel owners said was, please do not take this money from us, and then turn it into something else that doesn't actually support tourism. And I've always remembered that, and I thought, my God, we owe them an obligation to make sure that that money is spent as well as it possibly can be. I voted for that original ordinance, and I remember that plea, that we not leave them hanging by taking that money and then dumping it into God knows where. And then I look at this, and I, I just have to ask this question, well, how on earth does it cost $9,000 to do a calendar and social media and, and a website? And so, these are the questions we have, and they're good questions.
Well, I'm sure, anytime you'd want to talk to Kathy, I'm sure she'd be more happy to, to meet with you, too, but the general fund, that being said, the general fund that the city used, would makes me more rate than anything I see here.
My understanding was it was going to Parks and Rec, which was, or tourism related. But I'm looking at this thing right here, which is $9,058 for, to keep a calendar, I looked at the calendar, the calendar's got, what, 30 items on it, 40 items on it? How much can it take to keep the calendar up? How much can it take to update who's a chamber member every month? An hour? And, and so I see this, and I just go, wow, you know, either, maybe you need a different vendor. But I just have this sense that if this was anyone's local business, they wouldn't be spending nine grand a year on website stuff, they would be sharpening their pencils a lot more, and some of that money would be going out for other tourism-related activities, and not whatever this is going out for. So, we have questions, and maybe there are good answers to this, but please understand that the questions are legitimate ones, and the information we get only makes there be more questions.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the questions, I just, my concern is the commission, I would like to see stay in place, because it keeps politics out of it. You have the opportunity to appoint the committee members, the commission members.
Or whoever sits here.
So, I mean, that's, and that's only your term, so I, I think that takes care of what you're, really, sounds like you're wanting to do.
The commission meets only four times a year, though, right, Ron?
Wrong.
Monthly.
Okay, monthly.
So you guys are gonna have to meet monthly to, to do that, then?
I've read, I've read minutes, I've read minutes to the Tourism Commission, sometimes it doesn't meet for three, four months.
What does the city plan on doing with their percentage? Is there any idea with that? I mean, you're asking the chamber how they're gonna spend their money, what, what's the city gonna do with their 20%?
I can only tell you what I would do with it, but that's not something you can find the council to, so. But our concern here is that we have accountability, and that there's a very clear process. Ultimately, we are the people who are responsible for that tax revenue. It comes from people that have entrusted us to make sure it's spent properly. We have an obligation to the people and taxpayers, and the hotel motel owners to make sure that's done. I'm sure that that's, that you'd agree with that.
Yeah. And see, before, the commission, when I served on it before, we used to make decisions, and then it would go to the council for approval, the council would make changes on that, which shouldn't happen.
When was that, when was that?
I've served probably 10 years. So, I mean, that, it's interesting how, you know, the, the council would actually change stuff, and there's politics. I, I just look into, there's four little properties that collect this money, and I think, you know, we need to, and the more we spend on that to bring people back, the more Platteville benefits. When, when the motel's busy, other businesses, restaurants are busy, I mean, people are in town, it, it helps, it helps city of Platteville out quite a bit.
Let me ask you this. If you look at this 2012 budget, $56,000, how much do you think of that $56,000 is being spent for salaries and fringe benefits? What would you say, as a member of the Tourism Committee, that?
How much was spent?
Of the $56,000 in the budget, how much do you think's being spent for, for salaries and fringe benefits?
Maybe 25, 30,000?
Try, try about 47, and I think you'd be closer. That means the other nine is where your direct expenses are for advertising, for supplies...
Those numbers just don't seem right, but...
Well, they're in there, right there.
And I know, the way the, the bill is written, they can use it for that, too.
I'm not saying that you can't use it for that.
They're not, they're not doing anything illegal by...
But what I'm saying is, that's, let's know where their money's being spent.
I'd love to see all of it spent on marketing and advertising, but that just, that'd be a dream, but...
That would be a good dream.
You know, that, that's a dream.
Well, I can tell you, though, Ron, you made a mistake there, because I can tell you, you can go up to Prairie, and they only spend 30% of their money is on overhead, 70% of their room tax is for advertising and marketing, and, so tell me why you can't do it.
How much, how much of their money is, is, how much do they collect for room tax?
I know percentages...
He's not on the Tourism Commission, so I think it's unfair to ask him to defend that, just in fairness here.
But I mean, but it's the same, it's, numbers are numbers, and I know it's smaller, but it's still the same...
We have to use the same percentages, if you're gonna use the, you can't use the same numbers and same percentages, you gotta use the same percentages with the percentages and numbers. But...
But that's how it can be done, is what I'm saying. I'm saying it can be done if you say, 50% of our local room tax, local, to develop local tourism, use 50% of it, but put 50% of it away, so people can come in and ask for money, they know it's gonna be there, and you can set up a format to go, great, yes, we'll help you with $5,000 in advertising to promote local tourism into Platteville.
Maybe if, if it would help if the city gave their proportion...
This is not about the city's money and proportion.
No, if, if the city, though, rather than the general fund, could use that towards marketing and advertising.
It's about 70%.
Ron is not on the Tourism Commission, so we can't ask him to defend what they do.
I know.
That's, that's not fair.
We should probably try to get back to the committee versus commission ordinance.
Right. So, Ron, thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Rupp?
As Ann comes to the microphone, I would like to clear up one thing, I would like people to understand that the Tourism Commission does meet monthly. Duane meets with us, we meet the third Thursday of the month, very regularly at 7:30. Arlene, who's in the audience, is our reporter, and she files the reports. I don't know what happened to them after they go to the city, but we do meet monthly.
Okay, well, I, I did check agendas and minutes for, I think it was 2010, 11, there were quite a few times where it only met a few, every other month, every three months.
Ever since I've been on this commission, it's met monthly.
Ann?
Thank you. Ann Rupp, Platteville, live on Gulfview Drive in Platteville. I'm part of the board, Chamber Board of Directors, and I appreciate your time. I just wanted to offer some, hopefully some questions answered, or things I have picked up on in the last few months. I do believe this has gone a little longer, I, I wish it could have been done by now, and I, I understand there's gotta be changes for things, I totally understand that with committees. In regards, Steve, to the timeliness, and I know you've been at the commission meetings and such, that we thought we were offering a lot of those budgets and stuff when you needed them, we'd try and keep changing them in timely matters, within the next time we had board meetings, such of that nature. We have two tax advisors on our board that was helping us, we thought we were getting some of those statements done that was needed, so every time we heard we needed something different, we'd try and go back and change to what was needed without, of course, some things... of course, some things we don't have itemized totally like we need to. So we of course have changed the process like Tom said. Live and learn like everything else with certain things. I know it's hard for some of you guys too with money and dealing with the dollars. I know it's a hard thing to see when you can't say exactly where's that nine thousand or how it was spent. Even when people look at advertising, I want a coupon, bring this, you know, I only got five coupons back or something for my business to walk through this door. Same with tourism, you can send out as many books, but you don't know how many, if they read those, you hope they're all reading them. You hope they're passing them around and reading them and getting those people back into your communities to come through your doors on what you spent. We can't actually get a tangible number for those, that's what's hard with that. And what you see with businesses too, a lot of businesses deal with that. They look at their advertising budget and go, oh my gosh, look what I spent this year, was it worth it to me? Well, let's look at our other numbers and see what we had. It's a hard tangible number and I know that's what's hard too, to visually come across and see that. I understand also with the properties, it's hard to say, I don't know about you guys, I don't stay at them a lot. I'm a local person, do I have friends and family that stay when they come to town? You betcha, but I can't say because my money's not going in their beds. This is their money that goes in their beds through tourism that they're trying to bring in to town, to brighten in their heads and beds as they say, to bring it, and they want to fill those beds. In regards to the room tax, to balance the budget and who's been saying or what they've heard, this has come up, there wouldn't be a bill going through the state right now if it hasn't been an issue in those other communities. So I know that's where some of the issues are coming up from in regards to that in the Fox Valley and such. Because some of these towns, because budgets are tight, cities are coming into issues, they're taking some of that money from there to use, as they say, salt the streets when it should be used for tourism. That's where issues are coming in. People are putting it in their general funds and not using it for tourism. And like you, sometimes you say it's going to work out great that next year and it starts using it. Then oops, we're a little short on salaries, we're here, here, it gets moved over that way and it doesn't happen. That's why they have brought this bill forward and that's why a lot of businesses and chambers and senators in these towns stepped up and said this can't be done. We have to bring people in these towns to pay these bills and pay these taxes and to help out, we're losing out with that. So that's in regards to structuring there with their questions. I know in regards, you brought up some questions about the accessibility and the accountability changes, which I hope I've kind of presented in regards that we did try our best. I wished it would have been enough if, I mean, we always said if we were there, if you needed anything more to come forth. And then, and I know you said with, if we take it from a tourism committee, council, excuse me, a commission to a committee in regards to the control. And then I also hear John saying, well, we would take control and decide with this. To that, that means right there that the city would take control of it. And already the commission takes control of it. They decide, and I always thought, and maybe I'm under misunderstanding there, that they always went back to the city to ask and say, hey, this is what we're spending our money on in regards to. There's, if there's any questions ever, I don't know why some of this wasn't presented to the commission first before it went on this far too in regards to taking it away. I know that's been presented before, you know, and a few years back and such in regards to that. And also I know people, in regards to some of you mentioning people, you were getting letters or emails saying, this money's going and people are all worried where the money's going. I have heard it from some of the businesses and some different employees that I chose not to name, that they have heard with this new person being involved for the communications position for the forty-five thousand that that will be used, some of that money was told to be used for that possibly. That's where I'm hearing this in regards, so that's where some of the.
Not the seventy percent.
Not the seventy percent, none of it?
No, that has never come up, not ever, not once.
Well, that's what I'm just saying where some of that has come into play. We had heard that from some mentioned in regards to where that money would come from because other parts of the budget weren't open for it, so we didn't know why that would be. And in regards to that commission or the communications director person for forty-five thousand, Mike, you had made the statement about nine thousand dollars for setting up a internet and all that, social media. Wouldn't that person, isn't that part of the job description for that person also that's going to be taking that job? Among other such person issues that they'll be doing too?
I think so, but I thought, you know, I indicated what it was, I see that you're doing there, nine thousand dollars is pretty high for what you're getting.
Right, but this person would be for the forty-five.
We're not talking about that person, we're talking about what the chamber does with that nine thousand, not what this other person is going to do. The city website is far more comprehensive than what the chamber website is, let's face it.
Have you seen her?
Yeah.
Have you seen her chamber website, how we updated it? And we've got college kids that did a great job and they even link things to the city and the university with everything, to promote everything.
But this is about the tourism.
Totally, understandable, understandable. So I just want to reiterate, on behalf of the chamber board, we would like it to stay. We think the commission does a great job. There's always a member of the hotel, which needs to be a part of it because it's their money that's going through this. And there are businesses that are at stake here too to try and get them. So I just want to make a mention in regards to the board of directors. So I appreciate your time, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any action?
Arthur, I do have another piece of information. Ron, perhaps you can either affirm this or deny it. But my understanding is that when the original tourism, room tax was passed, it was a three percent tax. And then it's now four, is that right?
It went up a while ago, yeah.
And my understanding is that in fact, when that extra percent was put on, that the people who are property owners actually came forward and asked for that. And the main impetus for that was staffing money for the chamber.
That's correct.
So that is why that extra percent was put on.
Right, right.
And that was an expectation of the hotel owners or the property owners, lodging property owners, that that extra percent would be dedicated to additional staffing to keep the chamber, to keep that building open.
Longer, more hours, yep, which makes sense and it helps Platteville out too.
I just, I just wanted council people to understand that. So my expectation would be that a fourth of this money was specifically, since this is, a fourth of this money, it would be the expectation that it would have been.
Is that written into the ordinance that way?
Well, that was what the property owners brought forward. I don't have, I haven't looked at the ordinance, but I, I do know that when the property owners came forward, that was their, their reason for suggesting and endorsing it.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twelve dash oh-nine repealing section three point three seven Tourism Commission and creating section three point four-three Tourism Committee.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion.
I have a question. It says this ordinance will be in full force and effect when it's passed and published. So what happens for the two thousand and thirteen budget? There's now an agreement between the commission and the tourism entity to go forth through two thousand and thirteen. So what happens as far as who's going to develop the budget for two thousand and thirteen? Would that be a commission, will the commission stay in force until the end of two thousand and thirteen? Since we have a contract with, they have a contract with the tourism entity?
Contracts enforced.
The contract is enforced.
The contract is with a group that doesn't exist, the tourism commission, contracted for the tourism entity. And if you abolish the tourism commission, then in fact, aren't you?
May I recommend you make part of your motion to include the fact that you intend to honor the contract?
I, that was assumed, but we can certainly add that in. The contract would certainly be honored with all the provisions, which includes what? I think there's an eighteen month notification.
Eighteen month notification? Are you changing your motion to reflect that?
Yes, I am.
Is that okay with the secondor?
Yes, it is.
Is that okay with the rest of the council? Because once the motion's on the floor, it belongs to the council, is that okay? All right, so the motion is to.
Basically, you're changing the contract.
How are we changing it?
You're changing because.
They're going to answer.
Commission sets up the budget with the tourism entity. Now what's it going to be now?
Our committee will.
How our committee will.
Our committee will.
The contract's the same, Ken, contract's not affected.
Other discussion.
So is this then, that's all right.
Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
No.
Deleke?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is ordinance twelve dash ten repealing and recreating section three point three five A, D and E regarding the room tax.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Killian?
No.
Deleke?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Those are the action items for tonight. Under information and discussion items, item A is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two regarding accessory uses, specifically fences and retaining walls. Joey, want to give us a brief rundown of that?
This is actually to make a correction in the previous ordinance we adopted regarding accessory uses when we did the language in that ordinance, the way it was worded was to repeal and recreate certain section. We weren't specific enough in the language as far as the, what sections of that ordinance. So we inadvertently deleted the sections of the ordinance regarding fences and retaining walls. So this would put it back in the ordinance. We're not proposing any changes to what was in there. This has got to go with planning commission, I guess if anybody would like to consider a change, this would be a time to do that. But this would just put in that same language.
Questions?
I don't even want to ask how that could happen.
It's actually pretty easy.
Gremlins. Gremlins. Item B, under information, is a job description for a director of administration. Larry, would you give us a brief rundown on that?
Yep, in two thousand and eleven, the city council approved the staffing plan for the city of Platteville. It's to be fully implemented by December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen as part of the staffing plan. The Department of Utility Billing and the Finance Department are to combine under the direction of the finance director. Furthermore, a director of administration position is created to oversee the finance director, the city clerk, the airport manager and various other subordinates. What's being brought before you is the job description to help create the director of administration. As we continue to implement the staffing plan, this position quite frankly needs to be created. Also on page ninety-eight of the staffing note, it talks about how the position would be funded. You'll recognize that there is additional cost to this proposal. However, given the money that the staffing plan has saved the city so far, I think it's reasonable to continue to implement the staffing plan.
Are you suggesting then that by cutting hours to thirty-seven hours a week for other employees that we're able to fund this plan?
No, that's not what I'm suggesting.
I have another question, is the airport manager not an employee of the airport commission?
The airport commission at this point does not have, and is not an employer. What they have is an independent contractor that works for the city of Platteville. Quite honestly, that relationship needs to change in the future. The employee no longer qualifies as an independent contractor under federal law. So we're going to have to be making some changes on our staffing. And I'd like to try to address the airport manager at a future meeting. We're trying to work out with the attorney and the airport commission on how to handle that.
Ken?
Yeah.
Did I make a mistake? I see you guys laughing a little.
No, that's nothing.
I apologize.
It's private things in Ken.
Oh, I just wrote something here, kind of texting, I guess you'd call it, texting.
Well, he was, I just said you are next, I wrote you are letters next. And so he's laughing because he comes from a generation where texting is maybe less used.
LOL.
LOL, yeah.
Now, what I'm bringing up is that some people ask me or comment to me about people being added on the salary side. So what I am recommending is that we have kind of a balance sheet or ledger. On one side, we have the costs under the new system as far as administration and employees. And on the other side, we put the old costs. So on this thing here, which you gave us, you have finance director, utility office manager, but you didn't show the utility office manager is becoming administrative assistant, which is a new position. And the communication specialist is a new position as well, so.
That's correct.
If we had some way.
I think what you're asking is already done.
On both sides, former, new proposed, this would help us as far as we can answer the question better.
I believe you get that every quarter as the staffing plan implementation. As the staffing plan is implemented, on the bottom of the implementation report that comes to the city council, it talks about all of the changes that have occurred as the plan has been implemented and the net impact onto the financial budget.
Would you include that in the next packet for us, the most recent one that you've given to us?
I'd be happy to, if you wanted to wait till April, I could give you quarter one in two thousand and twelve. But I'm happy to provide fourth quarter in March and then first quarter in April.
And that way, if it's not satisfactory, he can make some commentary on it.
I'd just like to be able to see the data and answer the question.
That's where the sixty thousand dollars of savings has already come from, is the last staffing report that you got in January for the fourth quarter, two thousand and eleven.
Mike, is there a comment? If you can, or Steve, sorry. I don't know if I'm prepared to vote on this next meeting. I want some more information. You say in here that after both utility office manager position and finance director position are scheduled for vacancy, I will amend the job description. I want to see the, I want to see a job description under the new proposed salary for not only the director of administration, but also the finance director. I want to see how, I want to see where, how things are done now and how they would be done under the new proposal.
Okay.
I want to see it for all the people involved in it before I vote on it.
All the people, as in the finance director and the director of administration?
Finance, utility manager, I guess, the director of administration, the finance director. I want to see something that says, okay, this is how everybody's doing it now and this is how it's going to be done under the new proposal.
Okay.
Now, I'll tell you why I want to do this. This reminds me of, I probably shouldn't go there, but I remember a few years ago over at the university, we combined colleges and we were, and we were going to, Barba will probably remember this, Ken, we were going to save a lot of money by going from five deans to three deans. Well, we did that, but now all those three deans now have all assistant deans.
Okay.
Some too.
And there was never any money saved, so which reminds me of that. So I want to see it before I vote anymore on it.
I would also like to.
Remember that?
I remember.
Crazy.
I would also like to see some more definition to the specific activities, examples of work performed as I read through those, I don't really see any specific activities.
Okay.
And would the director of administration, would this person also be in charge of HR for the city?
Yes. A lot of the responsibilities will come from the staffing plan that you guys looked at. I can put that into language and put it on the job description. I attempted to do that, but I need to do that in more clarity, list out a few more jobs. Just to let you know, I was planning to do that. What I wanted to do was have the director of administration do it because those people would all be subordinates of that position. So we'll get there, I can spend some time on it myself and get that ready for you.
If he doesn't get it complete by the next meeting, we'll just hold this over.
Yeah, well.
So that we have that information.
I will not have it for the next meeting.
Or do a work session on it again, I don't know, I mean, we love those work sessions, so why not?
It definitely won't be for the next meeting, I'm not going to be able to do that.
We'll pull it back as information until.
Okay.
Ken?
I have a question about one seven, section one point seven. What is meant by vendors?
Anyone supplying product to the city?
Be in charge of making sure the vendors are given as competitive bids. So does that mean street construction?
No.
Dwayne will be in charge of making sure we get good vendors?
When, when you say vendors.
What is a vendor?
I picture someone who does city purchasing. And it's more likely that they'll be supervising a clerical position that'll help with the city purchasing.
It won't be street construction, it won't be.
No, that's typically with a public works director. No, that's typically with a public works director.
Buying toilet paper.
Toilet paper, soap.
Paper. I prefer paper and other office. I'll be ink.
Thank you.
Please don't picture this position buying a ream of paper. This is a position that will negotiate contracts for year-long purchases of many, many, many reams. I mean, this isn't a, a small responsibility.
What it's gonna cover?
Well, I can do that, I, I don't think you want me to list all of the vendors and all the things purchased, but...
Minor purchases, not major bidding purchases.
No, major is what they'll be doing.
Okay.
If, if you guys wanna...
I think we need more clarification.
Okay, I'm happy to do that, I, I didn't know how in-depth you wanted to, to participate.
And then another one I wondered about was, he's gonna serve as City Manager in the absence of the City Manager. And so what's an absence?
Well, that's probably something that's pretty routine in this type of a job description. You have to have someone to fill in in, in the absence of the City Manager.
Vacation.
Meaning leave for a day?
Well, that could happen.
Vacation.
Yeah, I think it's more vacation.
Going fishing, whatever.
He had a medical leave, Ken.
I do get some vacation time.
He went on a medical leave, though, Larry, it would be a medical leave.
I, I think that this position will be well-qualified to do that. Did you suggest that that shouldn't be included, or you want that further defined?
I'm just trying to find out what absence means.
You want me to define absence?
No.
No.
No, no, that means you're not here, we all know.
I, I'm misunderstanding what's being asked, I think.
Well, what is, is it two hours or one day, or...
You want that in the job description? Is the whole council in favor of this? Is this really what you wanna see?
We know what it means.
We know what absence means, it means you're not here.
Killian?
For an extended period of time, now ask me to define extended period of time. You're out for lunch, Dwayne fills in.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep the job description in a general reasonable way that other job descriptions are done, and if it's not satisfactory, send it back and I'll keep making revisions.
Good, you good on that?
Good.
Item C, under information, is the PUD and Development Agreement Amendment for Washington Place Apartments. They originally had asked for thirty-nine units, they'd like to drop it to thirty-eight and use that thirty-ninth unit as an office for, I believe, a manager.
There's a second change they're requesting, and that's to change the LLC. Do we require a bond or anything from these people?
We didn't require a bond with the original LLC.
We, I couldn't hear you.
I said we did not require a bond with the original.
We did not, so it's not, there's no bond or any. My question is, is changing the name of the LLC, do we have the protections and what have you in place that we would have had with the original contract?
Since we didn't require any the first time, I guess the answer is yes.
I'm just raising that question, and as...
Yeah, the, the original agreement said all the conditions and terms of the agreement pass on to any successors, but it also says that you have to approve that change.
The last item under information is item D, Satisfaction of Mortgage for Professional Properties LLC at four fifty-five Enterprise Drive. Two thousand eight, the city sold their last shell building to Professional Properties. The city loaned the buyer fifty-four thousand some dollars to assist in the purchase. They met a requirement, a set of criteria under which we would forgive the balance due, and that's what this item is for. Balance due, I believe, is thirty thousand, four hundred and one dollars. Questions about that?
No.
Nope.
Okay, at this point, we end the televised portion of the meeting. We'll go into work session for probably in the area of half an hour, and then we'll convene into a closed session to discuss the sale of industrial park property and the sale of the Bonza Street parking lot. We'll take a break for about five minutes, and we'll be back.